I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. The copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, August the 11th, 2014, at the Administration Center at 1005 Waterford Drive, Drive Force in Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to forward newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do I have a motion?
I move we amend the agenda, sir. If we could take out, please, the adoption of the agenda proposed meeting.
Thank you. It's been, uh, motions been made to remove agenda item number three, adoption of agenda for closed meeting. It's been first by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Morris, and...
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary of State, aye.
Ms. Hogshead?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Second. Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Dr. Thurman?
Aye.
Secretary of State, aye.
Ms. Hogshead?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Oh, there are no words that I can say to express the sorrow that I think everybody in this room is feeling what's happened to our community. Um, so I appreciate if we can maybe just take a moment or a moment of silence, um, in, uh, respect and recognition of the challenges our district and our communities are facing. Thank you. This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the Board members and to the community. Uh, first up, it'll be Mr. Ebert.
Okay. I'd just like to thank these wonderful people in Florissant, Ferguson, School District, uh, area, the voters who voted for Prop S to help all the kids that go to this wonderful district. Um, I can't tell you what that means to, you know, all of us, and mainly to the kids of this community. Um, there were so many people behind the scenes that worked on this. I couldn't possibly list them all, but I do want to mention Paul Morris, who pretty much, uh, quarterbacked the, uh, the committee team with, uh, Rob Chevot, our president. On the school side, of course, our superintendent, Larry LaRue, and our director of communications, Jan Short. Um, just to name a few, uh, people in the community, the North County Chamber, um, Commerce, who backed us. Um, also, uh, Rance Thomas and his groups helped us. Um, Johnny Landoff, the mayor's, I know, uh, Mayor Tom Snyder of Florissant wrote a nice letter. So, just so many people, the FFNEA, uh, Mr. Frank Green, the president there. I mean, it was just such a collaborative effort, and, uh, I just am so encouraged for the future here. And I just wanted to thank so many people and thank mainly the voters who, who realize how important this is to our kids and their community to help us. So, thanks so much. That's all.
Mr. Brown?
I normally should be speaking first, but Mr. Ebert says that he has to, and as a consequence, he's always stealing my thunder. However, I'm gonna repeat what he said because I want to say it too. Um, I was in Los Angeles. I had to leave, uh, the Saturday before the election, and, uh, frankly, Tuesday was a tough day for me because I was just sitting there worrying about it all day long and, uh, following it. Um, as, uh, Mr. Ebert said, thanking people, we cannot thank enough those that were involved in this. But there's four people I especially want to thank, and that would be, one is Jana and Laura. You just did a fabulous job. I am proud to be associating with you, helping you. And, um, President of our Board, Rob, your hands were on this. You did a wonderful job. We appreciate you for, for what you did in your leadership. Last, I want to thank Paul Morris. And as I called Paul, I said to him, and I want to say to you, Paul's hand has been in this district in the last three years, and I want to thank you for that, Paul. Your leadership, your leading-ness has been fabulous, and I'm proud to be associating with you. Thank you for your job. We have been given just a moment to breathe, but we're going to go right back to the responsibilities that we have. We're kind of on the mountaintop right now, but we're coming back down, and we're gonna be back in the valley where we belong. And we're going to continue to work diligently to protect the funds of this district. That is our, that is our job, and make no mistake about it, that is what we're going to do. We're going to, I believe, heal and help heal the financial difficulties that the district finds itself in, and in many instances, they're not responsible, we are not responsible at all for that because of taxes and things like that. But we have a task still ahead of us and a challenge, and we're going to go after it with everything that we have to protect this district. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Schrader?
Now, I'd just want to thank the community for the support of the schools. I'm glad that Keith brought up, as I said even before the campaign got started, that, uh, our tax levy doesn't solve our problems, but it does give us a little bit of breathing room. We still have to be cuts, but they won't be for pony, hopefully, and, uh, with a better economy, maybe we'll come out of this, uh, okay. Uh, later in the meeting, we'll talk a little about the, uh, new, uh, program they're working on to make sure that we stay focused on the big priorities, the strategic plan, and, uh, each of us will be working on different areas. And I'm, uh, glad to say that I'll be working with Dr. Diggs on accreditation of student achievement, and I'm going to use my math brain a little bit reading off those statements. So, I appreciate being able to do that.
Dr. Thurman?
Good evening, everyone. I would also like to echo what my fellow board member said about the Proposition S and your support. We could not have done this without the support of the community, so thank you so much for the work that you've done and for voting for Prop S, but especially those who were in the trenches and working, and you know who you are, Laura, Jana, Larry, Forrest, and all of us. I think many, all of us worked and we did, did different things to help with the, uh, with Proposition S, and like working the polls and making the phone calls and doing those things, but that's nothing compared to the job that you all did. So, who just want to say, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know our community's hurting right now, and, um, you know, it's, it's, we're happy to that Proposition S passed, but this other thing that's going on right now, um, I know it's sad and it hurts, but the one thing that I want us to always remember is the life that was lost, and, and that's the bottom line. We've lost a soul. We lost a child. We lost, it could have been one of our, our children, and as a matter of fact, I say it's one of ours because it was a community thing. So, I just want to say we want to keep, keep sight of that, and that the bottom line is that we lost, we lost a life. Um, also, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the teachers and administrators who are going back to work. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend the school fair. That was a wonderful event. Just one of the, the star things that happens in our community. One of the things that we do just to make our community the community that it is. That fair was awesome. Thank you for those of you who did the work and, and took the time and, and we were in those hot tents, and that, that means something. And that's a sense of community. That's important to us. So, thank you for the work that you did with, uh, with the community fair. Also, I had the opportunity to go to the administrators' retreat. Again, just sitting there and listening to all of the work that they have to do, and also, as a retired principal, I can remember sitting in that chair and listening to all of the things that they have to do, and the list goes on and on and on. So, I, I felt them. I felt what they were feeling, and it's really important for you to understand the load that the principals have in their buildings and the teachers have, and the superintendent acting, superintendent, he's acting very well, too. All the things that they have to do. And then, uh, the other thing to, as a new board member, and I've said this to my fellow board members, it is difficult to make the decisions that we have to make, and I'm finding out firsthand how, when we sit and we make those decisions and we listen to all of the facts and we finally come to a conclusion, or we collaborate, we work together, we come to a conclusion, and we feel that we are supporting the community and doing what's best for the community. It is a difficult job. It's one I signed up for, not afraid of the work, but I just want you all to understand that this board is behind this community. This board is really working hard to make the right decisions for everyone. We're not gonna please everyone a hundred percent of the time, but know that our hearts are in it, and we're doing what we think is best for the community. Thank you so much.
Evening. Well, I've said most of what I wanted to say already tonight, so I won't repeat it because we're kind of, uh, anxious to get out of here tonight, but I do want to say that, uh, for the last 20 years, I've been, I've been helping run elections in this district, and, uh, certainly, uh, that, that effort did pay off this time, and I really, really appreciate everybody's help. Uh, Laura was a fantastic help in all the meetings that she went to and presentations that she did. I'm sure she was tired of saying it by the time she got done, but it was work that needed to be done, and, and she did a marvelous job. I want to thank her for that. Jana did a wonderful job of getting information out to the public on, on the school district side and making sure that everybody understood what, uh, what was needed. Uh, Mr. Roy did a wonderful job in helping with the campaign as well. But I, I can't say enough about Rob and, and all the help that, that he gave me and, uh, making sure that, uh, everything got done. I know at times it seemed that perhaps the campaign was a little, uh, disorganized, but, uh, trust me, uh, we had a plan and we were just, uh, trying to get it done, and, and that's the most efficient way we could. So, I want to say that. But, uh, talking about campaigns, uh, I, I remember back to, uh, actually, the third campaign I worked on, which was Jean Garofalo's and, uh, her passing this past week. She passed it on Election Day, and, uh, I know that, uh, Ms. Hogshead's gonna say more about that, but I just want to know that she was my friend, and, uh, she'll be missed. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to say, repeat everything that they said. I'm just glad that we, uh, were able to pass the, the tax levy, and I want to thank everybody for all that they did. But we have a new day and a new start, and with the tax levying money, we will be able to move forward. But at this time, I would like everyone to please stand with me, and we did lose a dear, wonderful, outstanding teacher. We lost a dear friend, and we lost a great school board member, so I would like us to take this time, please, to remember her in silence. Thank you very much.
One more thing. I forgot to, uh, mention Mr. Frank Green. He put in a lot of hours on behalf of his campaign, and he certainly deserves the acknowledgement of that. Appreciate your help. It was wonderful. Couldn't have won without him.
If you do, or if you're not aware, we have postponed the start of school until Monday on the 18th. Um, with the continuation of the unrest in the community, uh, we felt it was best, uh, to postpone, especially at the urging of a lot of parents within the district. So, uh, email has been sent out. I know KSDK has already reported on it, uh, so, but, uh, come Monday, we'll be business as usual, okay? Um, we are proud to announce that on Monday, the Board of Education has selected a search firm, um, to be conducted for our, uh, new superintendent of the district. We selected a, uh, company called Pro Act. They were based out of, uh, Dallas and out of Chicago. Um, we brought in, uh, three firms that made a presentation to us, um, some discussion about it, and we're really excited, uh, about using Pro Act. They're very strong in selecting superintendents for urban and suburban districts, uh, and, uh, they are very familiar with our district, and they're embracing the challenges and looking forward to it. We couldn't be more excited about, uh, this partnership. Um, it isn't a gin item, but, uh, we are gonna be, uh, we did complete the strategic plan. Uh, we'll be talking about that in a little bit more detail. Uh, thank you to the entire community that stepped forward, uh, with that. Um, and also regarding Prop S, this was definitely a, a team approach to, uh, putting this together. Um, not one person did more than another. Uh, we kind of spread the, the pain equally. Um, and, you know, there's a long, long list, and they, we've named off many of them, and we could have kept going with it, but, um, on behalf of the Board and in lieu of myself, as a taxpayer and as a parent, I, I do thank you for your support for Prop S. And, um...
I'll just stand right here. I won't need a microphone. Um, thank you, Board. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just would like to announce in July, I along with five other, uh, members were proud and honored to represent Ferguson, Florissant at the, uh, National RA in Denver, Colorado. It was, and it's always a blessing to carry the FFNEA flag and represent the wonderful people of this district. Also, in July, there was a summer academy that we had in Columbia, Missouri, that I was a part of, and part of that summer academy was to let us know, to let you know, that there is a new state amendment that's coming, and it's gonna need our attention. Be looking out for it. We're gonna be, uh, talking about it more in the future. It's something that you all really need to look out for. Um, all I need to say now is my battery's charged. I think everyone else's battery's charged, and we're ready to go to work. Thank you so much.
Good evening. The few comments that I have, uh, in itself is, is probably a little surprising because we're starting a school year, and there isn't much to talk about. However, what we are seeking to do right now is to make sure that we are being as responsive as we possibly can to the, to the needs of our staff and to the community interests. We're eager to begin, and, and we know that, that, um, students are ready, parents are ready, uh, staff members are ready. But we will make sure that we do so at the appropriate time, and, uh, we are being responsive to, uh, interests of the community, remarkable of that, and, um, we have every intention of, of meeting the expectations that the community has for us and doing it well. So, um, it will be soon, and we look forward to this year getting underway.
This portion, um, the Board allocates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding items listed on this evening's agenda. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and to limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policies 4054, 405-Guy, and Personnel Law, speakers shouldn't refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. According to policy, the Board will not respond to public comments. Time is allocated at the end of the public session for suggestions and/or questions from the audience on other subjects not on tonight's agenda. Please identify the agenda item six through nineteen that will be addressed. Is anybody who wish to address the Board? State your name and the agenda. There'll be a portion available for you at the end of the meeting. Is there anybody else seen, hearing, or knowing? We'll move on to agenda item six for the consent agenda. Uh, the Administration will present the following items for approval on the consent agenda, and Mr. Morris, would you please read the dispersments?
And will we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. If there are none, then pass. Right, um, break any instructions. Uh, Mr. Hadley?
Being part of education. I would like to make two course proposals for Forensics One and Forensics Two. Teachers approached me regarding their students' interest in the topic of forensics. Forensics is a current, relevant, high-risk topic for high school students. Both courses are being proposed in the science elect that promotes great students. Forensics One will be for students that are interested in the forensic topic. Forensics Two is for those students that are interested in pursuing a career in forensics, medicine, or criminal justice, and if met those are pre-referenced. The goal of these courses is to improve students' understanding of forensic concepts and to improve their potential for success in their chosen field while using science in college. No additional teachers are needed to teach this course, and about $800,000, we will make...
And will we have...
Second.
Any second to that? Beautiful. All right, motions were made. Second, any discussion regarding this?
I know that, uh, when I was teaching, uh, one of the teachers at North did some forensics in a, in biology class. The kid really liked it. They, uh, very... Got excited about it. If you can get him excited, you can teach.
This will take time, but next school.
There any other discussion? Here we go. All in favor of accepting Forensics One and Two, the 2015, 2016 school year, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Dr. Weigold? Oh, all right. Uh, Ms. Weitzel, uh, the 2015 Summer Learning Academy report.
The district operated a summer school program for elementary, middle, and high school students during the summer of 2014. The Summer Learning Academy was designed to meet the needs of students requiring additional instructional support, reading below grade level, jeopardy of being retained or being behind high school credits. The total cost of the elementary program was $75,969.75 through Title I funds. The total cost for secondary was $95,083 through district funds. You have received a copy of the Summer School Learning Academy PowerPoint for approval.
Is there any discussion on the 2014 Summer Learning Academy report?
I'd just like to comment that they came in under budget, which is always very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Weigold. We're very pleased about that.
Any other discussion? Here we go. All in favor of the 2014 Summer Learning Academy report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Joy. Early education contract with Developmental Systems.
I'm here to ask your approval of renewing our contract with Developmental Systems to provide consulting and staff development for, uh, kind educators and teachers, uh, about their work during home visits, particularly related to their role in behaviors for children.
And will we approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Rouse is up there. I want to thank her for helping with Prop S Two. She, uh, she was a trooper. She phoned back. She got a shared sign. She, she really helped us.
Thanks for your leadership.
Is this a one-year contract?
Yes.
And how long have we used Developmental Systems?
Oh, wow. Probably 20 years. It's a really unique service because they can focus on that one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the early education contract with Developmental Systems, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. If there are none, then pass.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Ashlynn? Dr. Diggs? All right, early education, special education.
Good evening. I apologize, Dr. Ashlynn, for not being here tonight. I'm standing here. She said, "Each year, our school district goes into a partnership with a special school district to provide early childhood special ed services for our students, and we're asking at the end of this year that we be able to do that with your board."
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Here are none? All in favor of the early education, special education, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Here are none, pass. We'll move on to Ms. Medrusik for the Annual Secretary of the Board Report. This is for Board Information only.
Sorry, I'm not the most technological person. Okay, every year, our district is required to submit a financial report to the State of Missouri and report our revenue expenditures and how we did financially. Um, this report contains a lot of detail, and I'm not gonna go over that whole report, so I'm just gonna kind of summarize. Um, basically, um, overall this year, our, our, our overall revenue increased, um, by $3.6 million, while our expenditures, thankfully enough, decreased by $4.7 million. Um, I kind of have a breakdown of how that, um, how that looked. Our local revenue decreased by $2.3 million because of our current tax, um, you know, our subsvaluation dropped, and so we lost $2.3 million in local. However, our sales tax increased by .3300, so that was, that kind of, um, just dropped that to $2 million in local. Um, our state revenue dropped by $300,000. It was, um, $600,000 in this, in the basic formula, but we received about $300,000 more in the classroom trust, so we lost about $300,000 in state revenue. However, the federal revenue, we did very good. Um, our free and reduced, free and reduced revenue was increased by $400,000, and also our breakfast, we increased breakfast in the classroom, and that brought in an additional $500,000. That, and in addition to the Title I, we had additional expenditures also, but, um, we brought in $1.1 million more in Title I. So, between that, we brought in $2.1 million in federal revenue, which is very good for us. Other things, the other revenue that we brought in was the tuition, and that helped us greatly. That $3.7 million that we received helped us with our bottom line. The salaries, like I said, were, they were reduced this year. Um, salaries, which overall reduced, were reduced by $4.1 million, and that's because we did not give a tax increase prior year, and we also had some retirements, and so that helped our bottom line. And with the salved, reduced salary comes reduced benefits, too. Our purchases... Our purchase services did increase by $500,000, but that is due to, we have a lot of professional development this year, paid forward title funds, and so that increased our expenditure. But then our materials and supplies were reduced by $400,000. So with the increase of revenue of $3.7 million, and then the decrease of expenditures by $4.9, that really helped our bottom line. We came in with a fund balance of 14.96%, which is great, so it increased from last year. Does anybody have any questions?
You're still up for the insurance premiums?
That's not such good news. Thought you started off on a good note. Every year, in fact, July 28th, we meet twice a year with the insurance company, or the Insurance Committee, which is made up of retirees, NDA members, and also administration. And so this year, we met with them, and on July 28th, to discuss plans changes that we need to make to our insurance plan, and also to talk about our rate structure and what we're going to do with our premiums. We started off the meeting, and we talked about what our year looked like, and actually, we have two different types of choices. We've got Choice Plus, which is our premium insurance plan, and then we have our regular choice. Our Choice Plus plan lost, had a deficit every quarter. However, our Choice Plus made up for it. So at the end of the year, bottom line, we lost about $6.670,000 for this year. And our year, our plan year goes from October through September, so we still have another quarter left, but because of the experiences, we had a lot of illnesses this year, a lot of long-term illnesses, and so that's bringing our experience up, our experience of plan up. We are self-insured, and so we depend on our own experiences for our rates. So with that, then we looked at our annual performance for the last several years, and from 2008 to 2010, we continued to lose money in that fund with both plans. Then they changed, they had a committee, changed the plan, revised the way that our health insurance looked, and we actually made money. Then in 2011, 12, we made $1.4 million in that fund. But then the fund continues to, as insurance goes up, and that fund continues to go down. So this last year, we actually have a surplus of $272,000, but the Choice Plan made up the loss in the Choice Plus. So we had some decisions to make, because that Choice Plus plan is a very rich plan, and it is costing us a lot of money. So we kind of looked at why that is, and what are some things that we could do to help that plan. One of the reasons that that cost is dropping is our enrollment members drop, so we're not bringing in as much revenue as we had. And then the per member per month cost is going up by 11.7% from the prior year. So with the increase per member per month, plus your decreasing revenue is really kind hurting us. We also have ECA, the Affordable Care Act, which is causing us a lot more costs, and so we had to take that into consideration. Now, whenever you go to the doctor and you pay for your deductible or your copay, that is applied towards your out-of-pocket expense. And so now people are going to reach their out-of-pocket maximum faster than they did in the past, which means the district will pick up more of the cost. And then on the other side, also, prescription costs are also going up. Our district, the cost is $119 per month per member, and other districts, when we looked at it, it's $98 per member and $71 per member. So our cost for prescription drugs is significantly higher than others in our area. And we looked at the drivers and what's causing that, and a lot of it is due to diabetes. Diabetes is the biggest thing we spend money on in our district. And so we had a lot of conversations with our third-party administrator, how can we do that? How can we drive down that cost? And so we've got a conversation, and we've started, we're going to have a wellness committee for our employees, and starting in Jan, we're going to be coming to you in the next couple of months to have you approve this, but starting in January, we'd like to pick up a wellness program for our employees, and start doing these for our employees to make aware of diabetes, and then once we conquer that, then we can move on to the other areas of our health too, that we can address. So be looking for that, best of the come. We looked at other districts then, and to see what they were doing. Individual deductibles in other districts, the average is $500 for the deductible, our district is $50. And we looked at the copays. The average copay in other districts was $20 to $25, and ours is 20. And then for specialty business, like if you go to the specialty doctor, their copay was $40, and ours is 20. So we were kind of out of whack with that, and we wanted to see if there was something that we could do with that. Also with our prescription drugs, generics were $10 at the average, and we were charging $7. $25 is what we are charging, and the average is $35 in other districts. And then the non-preferred drugs, their copay was $61,25 average, and ours was $45. So again, we wanted to do something to kind of bring us more in line, so that we could get control of our prescription drugs. And then on compound specialty drugs, we didn't have any copay, and others did, so we were looking at that too. Because there's something that we really needed to do. So we talked about it, and we made changes to the Choice Plus plan, because the Choice Plus plan is the change, the plan is really costing us money. So instead of a deductible of $50, there will be a deductible of $100, and out of network, Choice Plus will be 500 with the new deductible of $1,000. Now, we didn't make any changes to the Choice Plan, because that plan's doing okay. The specialty office copay, we brought that up to $30 for 20. Hospital inpatient copay, it was 250, we raised that to 500. The outpatient surgery copay was 100, 100, and we brought that up to 200. And then the out-of-pocket maximum, we increased, because with Affordable Healthcare Act, they have made some changes where we have to have a maximum, and so we raised it from 1,000 to 3,000, because now every time you go to the doctor, those will be applied to your, the out-of-pocket expense will be applied to your copay. So we raised the out-of-pocket maximum to 3,000 on both. That was the one change we made to that on Choice. Then with generic, we kept the generic at $7 for the copay. Preferred brand, we brought up to 35, and the non-preferred brand, we brought up to 55. And in specialty, we've got, we put a copay on there now. So if you get a specialty drug, you're going to start paying a copay instead of not having a copay at all. And then mail order, currently, you get two times, you get a three-month supply for two times the cost, and we raised that to a two-and-a-half, a three-month supply for two-and-a-half with a copay. And then out-of-pocket maximum for prescription is also $3,000. And then there's a plan, also, the Affordable Healthcare Act also made us change the way that we offer our vision plan. Currently, we just offered a vision to our employees who had family not plan. But now, Affordable Healthcare is saying that we need to offer that to all employees. So we are going to just charge the employees what it costs us to put their spouse or children on, and so we had to put rates on that too. So when we looked at all the material and kind of ran the numbers, the insurance company suggested that we raise the premiums by 5% to cover all the costs. With all these changes, we still need to raise our premium by 5%. We went to the committee and talked about it with the committee, and because we weren't able to offer, accept a step increase this year, we negotiated that the employees, for the employer portion, we would still increase the premium by 5%, but the employees don't pay that portion. But if they have dependence on their coverage, then we would raise that premium by 4%, so that they're getting a 1% rate, you know, so because they, you know, everything's going up with the out-of-pocket costs and things, and so we raised the price by 4% for those who have to pay for the coverage. So as you, sorry, so as you can see, on the Choice Plan, these are the new rates for employee only, if you have to pay, you know, the employee is free, the employee doesn't pay for insurance. But if you have to add one of your spouse or children or family, those are the rates for the Choice and the Choice Plus. And also the employee contribution would also increase to $53 instead of 50. And then when we looked at the dental, the dental always does really well. We have really good experience with that, we always come in with a surplus. When we looked at the next year's projection, they were showing that we have a deficit, that because we've got such good experience with our dental, we did not increase that at all. So we kept the dental the same, and we also kept the life insurance the same. So we're asking for the adjustment and the raise for the employees.
It's been, motions were made, and second, for the insurance premiums, any discussion? All hearing none? All in favor of the new insurance premium, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Pass, ayes have. Mr. O'Neill, for the Boiler Replacement McClure High School.
One of the, one of three of the boilers at McClure High School is needed replacement. We received four bids, two bids, the lowest and most possible bid was Haze Mechanical for $61,522.95.
Second.
Any discussion on the Boiler Replacement McClure High School?
Hearing, how old was the boiler that you were replacing?
I don't know the exact age, but the oldest is free, it's very old. Actually, our staff, I'm proud of it, it's an innovative thing, it's been running for the last couple of years. One of the things I noticed, they asked us, they thought they used Tide detergent, and ran it through the system, and we cleaned it up, and kept it running. So we did that for last year.
How long will it take for it to be replaced?
It'll take about 30 days from being in, and the staff removed one other one to get to one, first of all in the summer.
Wouldn't they project a completion date?
It's going to be approved, they're in the start, so it should be done within a month or so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the Boiler Replacement McClure High School, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. All right, Mr. Larue, regarding District Compliance Officers for the upcoming school year.
Compliance officers recommended for the 14, 15 school year include LEA compliance, Dr. Gwendolyn Diggs. PSOL, ELL compliance, Dr. Eric Winkles. Homeless compliance, Amy Kajatori, that's with Steve Weeks as district liaison. Foster care compliance, Amy Kajatori. Migrant compliance, Dr. Gwendolyn Diggs. Americans with Disability Act compliance, Dr. Kelvin McMillan. Copyright compliance, Dr. Kelvin McMillan. Title IX compliance, Dr. Kelvin McMillan. District safety compliance, Tom Dunlap. District asbestos compliance, Terry O'Neill. Suicide referrals compliance, Amy Kajatori, with Jennifer Lane as district liaison. Safety and Green communities act compliance, Dr. Gwendolyn Diggs. OCR compliance, Dr. Kelvin McMillan. Title VI compliance, Dr. Kelvin McMillan. Disability, which is section 504, and/or Title II, Amy Kajatori with Dr. Eric Winkles.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion regarding the new District Compliance Officers for the upcoming school year? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. All right, Mr. O'Neill. Six zero five, bidding project labor agreement.
Tonight is the second agreement, this is the highest one speeding, also time, basically to answer a question you may have about it again.
Second.
Any discussion on the PLA?
I think you said, one time or another when we talked, that the company that reviewed and helping us plan some of these big projects, they already follow this, is that right?
That's correct. Amoresco, I mean, we've talked about it in the past, and then just recently signed on with us, they told us that an important thing they did is that they used all unit layers for the project.
My question is, does that mean every time they want to do one of these projects, we have to go through the impact analysis, and the results of the analysis, and the reason for the agreement, and basically have some kind of a hearing? Is that going to be required each time we do this because of this?
With, any projects we do with Amoresco, they are the ones we contact correctly with, so we don't have to do any other bidding or any other process by state statute, and so we would not have to do any of that. But we will possibly do projects without them, and if we do those, we would then have to go through the process.
So if we use Amoresco, we don't have to go through this process?
That's correct.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the competitive bidding PLA agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. Voluntary transfer and involuntary reassignment, Frank Green, are you doing this one, or Larry? Okay.
During negotiations earlier this year, there was a policy change, Policy 1016, voluntary transfer and involuntary reassignment. Policy that came to the Board omitted paragraph that you have here, that was the language that was in the policy, it should not have been omitted, and before we can include it in the policies, we need to make sure that we put it back in, because that's not what you saw. So we're asking for the Board just to approve this language, which was previously listed, but it was not the policy that was approved. And that was brought to our attention by the NEA, as we were doing our review for the policy book, so we can go ahead and print it and post it online.
And will we approve the language for Policy 1016?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the policy change with voluntary transfer and involuntary reassignment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have.
Thank you.
The next item is the District Strategic Plan. During the last year, district stakeholders, including parents, teachers, administrators, community members, board members, participate in the development of the strategic plan, which is going to be presented for board approval. Jan is out with the media right now, but we've all participated in this, so can I have a motion to accept the District Strategic Plan?
Second.
All right, discussion. This is, I'm going to start off on this one. This was a wonderful process that we started, that really brought people from all facets of our community in, to talk about what direction we wanted our school district to go, and really to identify us, what kind of school district are we going to be. As a result, we developed a new mission statement, new values, and what we were planning to do is, next meeting, is to really roll this out much better than what we're going to do tonight, to give everybody an idea of what the mission statement will be, what those values are, what our focuses are going to be. There's been committees developed based upon the strategic planning goals. Cabinet members are assigned to those, as well as each board member. Somebody had mentioned that they were on one of the committees, I'm kind of a floating person, that I'm going to be one of the seven. I know Mr. Revert's going to be on the fiscal one, and Mr. Morris is on the technology side of it. Which one? Facility plans, and I know Mr. Schrader is on the academics portion of it. Dr. Thurman, he were disciplined. Ms. Hogshead, he were talented HR portion of it. But we're going to roll this out in more detail next month. I apologize. We're also looking to have the mission statements promptly displayed in the buildings. We are looking to take in private donations to have that done. So if you wish to donate, we'll be happy to take the money for it. But our goal is to really have this throughout the school district. So when you're sitting here, you'll see it. When we're in the boardroom, we're going to be seeing it. When we're in the conference room, we're going to be seeing, we're going to want this promptly displayed throughout the district, remind us of what our mission is. So, and the goals are already posted online, so we have been making headways with that. So any other discussion regarding the strategic plan?
Go, go. Tell them what you're doing.
Am I on this? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Being the shortest one, it's hard to...
Oh, I see. Yes, I will be working with Jan Ashore, and I am just delighted to be doing that. Thank you.
I want to point out too, that I think it's important for the community to know that the six goals that we have for the strategic plan, they're also the goals... the six goals that we have for the strategic plan, they're also the goals of the board. So they're very, they're aligned with the board goals as well as the strategic plan, six areas that we have that we're looking at.
I just want to emphasize that having a presentation next month would be very helpful for the public to make sure they know where we're going. But the public needs to understand to get started on this, we really do need to approve it this month. Because I know the Dr. Diggs has already told me that meetings aren't supposed to attack. So it's hard to attend meetings for a plan that doesn't exist. So it's one of those difficult things because of the times, but we can lay this out in a lot more detail hopefully next month.
And I'd like to add also that the plan is a plan that is not going to be put on a shelf. It's going to be measurable, we're going to be working with it, and we will have direction and we will know where we're going. And we will know, and we will continue to work diligently to build this district to what it can and should be. Do that with great amount of effort on all of our parts.
I'd like to thank Steve Finkelstein and Gigi Mix, I know they're not here tonight, but they, they were tremendous throughout this whole process. And I really appreciate all the work that they put into it.
Any other discussion on the strategic plan? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the district strategic plan, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, Dr. Diggs.
The Missouri School Improvement Program requires that each school district have a written comprehensive school improvement plan, which we refer to as our CSEP. This document directs the overall improvement of this education program and services. The CSEP for the district is focused on the board goals and the areas for improvement that's identified by the district. Action plans for each MSEP, five standard, and other district programs and initiatives are presented for your review and approval. The Comprehensive School Improvement Plan Committee will continue to review and revise the CSEP as needed to increase student performance.
Discussion on the CSEP. Hearing none? All in favor of the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. Tuition rate adoption. Mr. Drews.
Revised Missouri Statute, Section 167.131, require the Board of Education to set a tuition rate for uncredited districts in order for us to charge the districts for their students. Tuition is calculated upon the hours of actual attendance at the receiving district, which is our district. And tuition for the first, for the 1415 school year was determined using a tuition calculator that does exist last year. The 1415 tuition rate is set at $10,650 for the 1415 school year.
Discussion on tuition rate adoption.
Is this higher or lower than what?
It's almost exactly the same.
I think in terms of planning, we have to be somewhat circumspect. I know we've all received a letter from our review. Commissioner of Education has suggested that we not do this. So I think in terms of planning, even though the rate is exactly correct, I did check and math at every level, it has looked good. That's what it costs us per student. But in terms of reality, we may not do that. And I don't know what we're going to do if we don't, but I think that's just a fact that everyone needs to understand.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the new tuition rate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none? Ayes have. A maximum 15 minutes is provided for suggestions and our questions for members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium. Identify themselves and limit remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. To comply with the Missouri Sunshine Law and District's Policies 4054 and 4059, board members will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. The subject of the public comments will be noted in the minutes and appropriately addressed by the district. Does anybody wish to address the board at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Austin Roddick. And I'd like to know if any of the board members here in our community look across the condition of the track, basketball court, tennis court, if they are able to. And either we have an asset or a district to give, to part of their down low, to change it because it provides a lot of opportunity for students at that level to introduce to the track, to have some place to learn about basketball and play and points, which is a part of student at this high school. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Patricia Kane, and I'm up here on behalf of my daughter Joy Kane. I could try to put her in the transfer for McClure, a sophomore there by the highway, because she had so much problem at the other school where girls do year up. And more, she went to try for basketball. You know, the girls jumped her, beat my daughter so bad, stumped her in the head, broke her glass, beat her blue glass. I tried to put her in a new school. I put in a transfer for my daughter with Mr. Lawler, and he did not put the transfer in. I put the reason why, I did not want her to go to Berkeley. And I'm just fearful that these girls might hurt my daughter, this is my only daughter. And I'm just fearful that they might hurt her, and she's fearful. She wanted, she talked to someone on the board privately, let them know what they really did to her. They pulled off her robe, took her coat off her back, and broke these, you know, her glasses and just beat her bad. And I tried to put a transfer in, but Mr. Lawler didn't put it in. He told me that McClure denied her, but he said, and I called him back, he definitely voiced me, I called him back, and I said, "How did you get her denied?" And they said, "It was sent to me." He told me he had made that decision on my daughter anyhow. And I felt that was wrong of him to do. And you know, this is my only child, like I say, and he had talked to his supervisor about it, a Ms., her name's Nicole Weisler, about it. She had wrote their letter from the school, first of course, our school district, saying she was denied. And they had had me know within registration day. I had just recently got this letter from them. And she was waiting all month, June, for the letter. And Mr. Lawler finally called me, I might work at his down here for a voicemail, telling me that McClure denied, or she lied about it. He had got her paper out of the system. And I had put it on her, telling her why I want her transfer from Berkeley. And she gets fearful that school, that she would like to talk to someone privately, let them know what the girls did to her, beat her real bad. And that's all I want to say, and I thank y'all. Can I talk to someone privately?
Yes, you may talk, Mr. Roddick.
Thank you.
You're in charge of this meeting.
Thank you.
You can talk to me.
Mary has taken care of it.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Daisy Garnett, and I have come over to Mr. LaRue, and I also have said you and I have kissed her. I also have a great situation about the marriage process that we have as a parent. Just trying to, I know we've all been working so hard to come home and let you know that this is something that I am, that is important to me, to give something to this and the school while this request is held on, and let you know that I am still waiting on a decision. I'm just in the process of waiting for you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Hearing none?
I'm just a teacher.
Second.
Mr. Lawrence, when you're ready.
Mr. Revert.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
Terry.
Aye.
I'll go top. Would you want to?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for joining us tonight. Be safe.